With a deep understanding of the Princeton community in reviewing development applications, as well as establishing policies for regional and community planning. And be it resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to Mayor Elizabeth Lempert and the Princeton Council, the Princeton Planning Board, to recognize the services that Mildred Trotman has provided to the Princeton community. And therefore, let it be resolved that the Princeton Planning Board offers its sincerest gratitude to Mildred Trotman and offers its sincerest thanks to her for her knowledge, contributions, and dedication, and extends our very best in all future endeavors. This fifteenth day of March 2018. Amen? I don't know whether any of you have anything you'd like to add, but I know that we will all miss Mildred.
Absolutely.
Anyone? Yes. Go ahead.
Do you need a motion to adopt the resolution? Because I would like to offer such a motion.
If you would.
I move that we adopt the resolution.
I second.
I'll second, or Gail seconded before me.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carrie.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I guess I'd like to say a couple of words about Mildred, if I may, and I'll make it relatively brief. As those of us on the board, those of you on the board know, because we don't get to chit-chat in between these meetings, we don't really know sort of what we think about specific applications, and sometimes we have a hard time figuring out sort of what our style and what our thinking is about things. And I miss that. I know that's the way the law works, but I like knowing what my colleagues, sort of where they're coming from when they speak. Anyhow, I figured that Mildred and I each were on this board for about a quarter of our lives, which gives you plenty of time to figure out where someone is coming from. And for me, Mildred was sort of always the adult in the room. She dressed the part. She always looked great. She did her homework. She came. She knew the dossier. Her questions reflected that she had read it and thought about it. But I think what impressed me more than anything, and one would hope influenced me, was Mildred's way of speaking to our colleagues, to the staff, to the applicant, to exasperated members of the public. She was always reasonable, courteous. Her questions were always sort of created not to promote her own personal agenda, but to find out what we needed to know about either the law, what the applicant was really saying, or what the member of the public exasperated, as they might have been, was trying to say. And I think that kind of calm wisdom was very helpful in centering us, in a way, in our discussions. So I'm going to miss her a lot. And obviously, over a quarter of your lifetime, you become friends. And I think her influence persists, as influence does, in the way we all behave. I think we all behave quite well, I have to say. And so I just wanted to make those statements about how I felt about her. Thanks.
Thank you, Gail. Did anybody else want to add anything?
As one of the newest members of the board, I just wanted to say that Mildred was always a hero of mine, and I just feel very blessed and honored that I was able to sit next to her for two meetings. And I'm really, really thankful for that. And I just wanted to express my gratitude for all the years of service that she provided to us, the community.
And I, yes, speaking from all the way at this end of the dais, Mildred was also fun to sit next to.
She was.
And certainly echo everything that Gail said, and just want to add that when I was beginning an unexpected public service career, from which I am continuing to recover, in a neighboring town, Mildred was in the prime of her public service career and was an example and a ready, willing teacher, and somebody that you could always trust to, you know, give you sound advice without trying to tell you what to do, you know? And I appreciated that very, very much, and I'm delighted to have spent even a year and a couple of months on the same board as she. And I'll miss her, too.
Mildred and I went to a planning session together at Brookdale Community College, some certification, and I, you know, really got to know her then. And I just feel like she's a true leader. I mean, she always exhibited leadership wherever she went. I mean, she did it naturally, and I will really miss her leadership. I think she's just a natural.
Amen. All right. Well, we still have an agenda, even though we don't have Mildred to help us with stuff. So let's move on to the findings of fact. The first thing on that is H.P. Witherspoon Properties LLC. This is from December 14th of last year. It was a minor site plan with variances. And do you have any additions, corrections, imminations? Anybody? No? Yes? Hearing none, could I ask for a motion?
Yes, I will move approval of the findings of fact.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. No further comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. We have three sets of minutes now. What's it?
Are we not? ML seven?
Yeah. Okay, did the rest of you get ML seven? Because I did not get that.
You know, I didn't think I got it either. I had the other one in my packet, and then I got a subsequent email, agenda.
Well.
An hour and a half ago, I was scrambling.
Okay, those who did get that, is there any? How many of you got it? ML seven? Okay.
I don't think so.
So I guess the majority of you got it. So would one of you like to make a motion on that?
Julie Capizzioli, I move to approve the minutes of the special meeting. Wait, no, wait, sorry.
No, this was ML seven. It's a minor site plan with variances, and it's also from December 14th.
That was the zinder.
That was the small world building, the zinder.
Yeah, that's the one.
Three buildings combined into one lot, yeah. It was the last, last big application we did. No? Just? No? Do you want to move it?
I didn't get it.
I didn't get it either.
Well, I will move it. I did get it.
All right. Gail, Gail will move it. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those who got it, are you in favor of it?
Yes, aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, and did you get who didn't? Okay. So now we have three sets of minutes. The first one is the special meeting of August 3rd of 2017. Any additions, corrections? Anybody?
Sorry, now I'm going to move to approve that one. I'll move to approve the special meeting minutes.
Thank you, Julie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now, the next one is the regular meeting of October 5th of last year. It's October 5th, 2017. Any additions, corrections? Anybody? Hearing none, could I have a motion?
I move to accept.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Julie Capizzioli, I move to second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And the last set of minutes is September 28th, 2017. Anybody have any additions and corrections on that one? Yes, no?
Yeah, I move to approve.
Okay, it's been moved. Is there a second? Anyone? No? No second for that one?
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay. And that brings us to this evening's discussion, which is the ordinance harmonization. Lee, do you want to sort of walk us through?
Sure, yeah, yeah. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending. For those of you in the audience or the galleries, this is my attorney by trade, we call it the gallery courts, who don't know me, my name is Dwayne Williamson. I'm serving currently as the chairman of the Zoning Amendment Review Committee, ZARC. And first of all, I just would like to thank staff for taking on the monumental task of harmonizing the zoning ordinances of the former borough and the former township. I believe Lee and Jack and Derek and I, Lee, and our board attorney Gerald, I think, did a great job of reviewing hundreds of pages of ordinances and coming up and presenting to ZARC their findings and their ideas for the harmonization. We did meet a few weeks back, reviewed what staff did. We suggested changes. The changes were implemented. I also like to give special thanks, actually, to Councilman David Cohen. David did a tremendous job of painstakingly just going through even some of the changes that we made at our meeting and coming up with some other considerations. So what we're presenting to the full planning board tonight is the result of just a lot of hard work by a lot of people. And with those words, I would like to pass it on to Lee, who I believe is going to walk us through article by article.
That's correct. Thank you. Just to get all the paperwork straight, you should have, I think it's a March 1, 2018, copy of what we're proposing with the ordinances. As Dwayne indicated, we had a meeting. David raised a number of good points. We put in front of you, we met with him last week, so you're just getting it today, staff responses, as well as some suggested changes. Jerry, you look.
Yep. Did you say March 1?
I think so.
Okay, good. I didn't hear it. Just want to make sure.
Okay. So you have the changes from David. What we're really doing tonight is, this is a sort of ongoing process. Tonight, you're going to look at Article 4, Division 14, which is fire protection, and then we're going to jump to Articles 8 through XB. The reason we're doing that is previously, we had done 1 through 7, and we also did Article 13, which is historic preservation. So this would bring us all the way up through XB, and everything then would be harmonized in terms of borough and township, with the exception of the zoning code, which will be a much bigger effort. What you have in front of you, the new material or stuff moved, and the first section we're going to talk about will be definitions. And all the definitions you're seeing here are in italics, mostly because they were moved from another section and they're being put in Article 1. It's Section 10B-2, but because we're moving it, it's new and it's in italics. It is not all the definitions, and I brought all the codebooks if there's a question about why aren't we defining something. There are other things that are in the definition section. We're not showing you because we're not adding or subtracting them. They remain. We're just adding this new material. Also, for ease of reference, we used a strike-through for the language that we're taking out. And then there were a couple of different sections or divisions where we thought this was a good opportunity for a quick fix, and we'll talk about some of those. But we didn't try to do any major changes to it. When we get to it, there will be, I think there's really only one or two major policy discussions that we've identified for the board, and we'll get to that. But if it's okay, what I'd like to do is just go section by section, give you the pages. If somebody has a question, let's try to take them in order. But when we met at ZARC, we went every page by page, and I think for tonight's purpose, maybe if we can just, if people have any questions regarding the definitions, which are pages 1 through 9 in the section, it's all alphabetical, so if you have something in the A's, bring it up now, and if it's in the Z's, wait a minute or two. Gail, because this should just be a general discussion, so.
This is really minor, but on the first page, adjacent should be in alphabetical order. In other words, it shouldn't be where it is. It should be up there under adequate.
Which one did I have?
ADE, then ADJ.
Thank you.
And you'll be happy to hear, I didn't check any of the rest.
And if you look on the, there is a new sheet where we actually put in a definition of adjacent buffer area. Anyone else with concerns or comments on the definition section? If not, that brings us up to the Article 4, Division 14, Fire Protection. The table looks a little bit different. What we did in this case is, in the former borough and township, it referred to zoning districts as opposed to the density for residential housing. We left the zoning districts in for the commercial properties. The concern that staff had was, we've added a couple of different residential zones, and they never caught up with the fire protection plan. In this case, it doesn't matter what the zone for residential is, it'll all be based on definition. And then we added a little clarification in the ordinance as well to reference that it's residential density. I don't know if there are questions on fire protection. That's pages 9 through 14. Great. Article 7 is subdivisions and site plans, is pages 14 to 19. It's Sections 10B, 127 to 136.2. And as you thumb through, I think you'll see there are mostly minor edits. No major changes were made at this time in combining the two ordinances. Are there any questions on Article 7?
You mean eight?
Eight, I'm sorry. Thank you. Article 9 just deals with subdivisions. It's pages 19 through 67, so there's a number of provisions in here that we can go through. You'll see, we had a comment, again, one of David's comments, dealing with 10B, 142 on page 21, and we've added some language on that as well. And that's dealing with the minor subdivision approvals. We've updated all the checklists slightly, mostly adding requirements for historic preservation and affordable housing, and that's 10B, 157, 158, and 159. Unless there are questions, we could probably jump to Section 160.
Lee, could we go back to 142?
Go back where?
To 142, David's comment. I wonder if changing the shall in the fifth line down to may.
I can't hear you, Jerry.
I wonder if changing the shall to may in the fifth line down would help, even if all the subdivision committee members find that it conforms to the definition of minor subdivision. Even then, it seems to me the subdivision committee should be given the discretion to refer to the full board, and I think the may might do that as opposed to shall.
Maybe not use the mic and talk to me. I can't.
Still, I'm sorry.
Jerry, what page are you on?
Page 21.
I'm on page 21. Do you hear me better now, Lee?
I can clarify it. He's in the line, starting right after the strikeout section. He was suggesting using the word "may" classify and approve the sketch plan as a minor subdivision instead of the word "shall" classify and approve the sketch plan as minor subdivision.
Just change shall to may?
Yeah, the only thought was that would give added discretion. Added discretion to the point.
That's okay.
Yeah.
And then again, on the handouts, you'll see the extra language we added at the bottom
At 160? Actually, can I just interject for a moment? I'd like to get a little discussion about a comment that I had regarding the checklists for the application. So this was on page 24. The section describes, it's Section 10B-152B, and it describes the type of physical documents to be submitted. And I had suggested that in some way, we could insert language suggesting that an electronic submission, to the extent permitted by state law, could be an alternative to the paper hard copies. I think that, you know, there are a couple of reasons to move in that direction, one being that it's better for the environment not to print out multiple copies of the paper drawings. Number two, I think it's in line with the council's goal of user-friendly government, where essentially, we can significantly reduce the cost to the applicant of printing all those paper copies. And thirdly, for some of us who are comfortable with viewing things on the computer, it can actually be easier than flipping through these large sets of drawings to review the application. So those are my reasons for suggesting this. I know that there are some impediments, I guess, to immediate implementation of this, but I do know that the municipality has software, document management software called Seamless Docs, that appears to have the capability to receive and manage the routing of documents that would be required. And so I just wanted to open that up to discussion with the board to see. I realize it's not strictly speaking a harmonization issue, but there are a couple of other things that are not strictly speaking harmonization issues, but rather addressing, I guess, gaps that were seen in the ordinance. So I feel like this is not out of order to try and include this at this time.
Is this the only place where it occurs?
It is not. So this is the section dealing with subdivisions. There's another section that deals with site plan applications, where similar language would need to be inserted. I think.
Do you know where that is?
Is this a substantive change that would require? I mean, regardless, I don't know whether we vote to make it or not, but if we do, it, I don't really know.
Well, we're not at the point where we have to worry about whether it's substantive or not, because this has not been introduced by council yet, so we can make whatever change we want.
Okay. But where was the, do you know where the other places this occurs?
If, I could suggest, I think if the board wants it, David and I and others have had lots of discussions on it. It's my opinion Seamless Docs is not seamless, but if this is something that you feel is important, I'm not going to continue to argue against. I think it's a good idea. I don't think we're there. I don't think that the municipality's IT committee has dedicated the resources that I believe are going to be necessary, both in terms of staff and computer capability to do it. There's no reason we can't require an electronic copy get submitted. I'm sure Seamless Docs can accept the document. What happens with it after that, I don't know. But as Jerry pointed out, it's not substantive, because you're not, I'm not certain, David, if this is the best spot to put it in, but if it's something you want for all preliminary, final, minor, major site plans, it probably needs to be in each of those individual sections.
Right.
And with a lot of the changes, as we get into them, if there are other changes you want to make, I don't know if we can wordsmith that kind of stuff tonight, but you'll see it again, because the plan is, and as you know, all these ordinances get introduced and they get referred back to you anyhow. So rather than trying to wordsmith it, if the board feels it's important to have the electronic submissions, we can require it. I do have to caution you, I don't know if we have the ability to ensure that they're put up on the webpage in an orderly fashion, that the public can readily access it, without some additional resources from the municipality.
Okay.
I would just second what David said, I have strong support moving towards the, you know, electronic process for site plan applications. I understand that there might be some technical difficulties, but I think that, you know, having it in the language is probably a good first step. I think that, you know, council and the rest of the staff has to figure out what means to actually make it happen, but I think that it's a good first step.
I agree. Anyone else? I think.
In that case, why don't we just keep moving on the ordinance? We'll draft something before it gets introduced. I'll sit down with Jerry and some others as to appropriate language and where it can be in. Our thinking simply would be, not everything would be submitted electronically. We might want to wait until it's a complete application, so that you're not churning through a lot of different copies of the same material.
Right. And I also wanted to just clarify that I'm not suggesting we require electronic submission. I think that, you know, all this language of what a paper submission would look like could remain, but that we provide an alternative if an applicant prefers making the submission electronically, so.
Okay. Everyone? All right with that? All right.
Let's keep moving if we can, then. I think we're up to Section 160, where if you look at the handout, we did make some additional changes dealing with Section I and J for sidewalks and bicycles.
What page are we on at this point?
Pages 43 and 44. If you look at what we handed out, there are separate, or new pages 42 and 43. Give you a minute to read it, but basically, the sidewalk section was a minor change. This section deals with when sidewalks are required and bikeways are required, bike paths in the master plan and what we do. There are certain instances where the board may decide that they don't want to require either a sidewalk or bicycle. Maybe there's not another sidewalk or bike path within miles. It's not a missing gap, for whatever reasons, and this sort of outlines the procedure. What was changed is that, in all cases, the developer will. What was changed is that, in all cases, the developer will provide an in-loop payment for a sidewalk and/or for a bicycle path if we're not requiring it. I don't know if there are any questions, but if it's acceptable, we would just insert the new language in red on the supplemental pages 42 and 43.
I have a couple of questions. On page 43, at the very top, shade trees. Maybe it's not, it's someplace else other than the ordinance, but does the town have specific rules and guidelines for the amount of area for root growth and that kind of thing when shade trees are planted? Are there planting standards that need to be met in order to make sure that the tree has the best possible chance to survive?
There's, in the shade tree ordinance, which is not part of the land use, there are standards for planting, but what we do is, depending on the allowable, the available space, kind of dictates the species of the tree. So if you only have three or four feet between the curb and sidewalk, you don't plant a huge tree. So we do look into that, but there are standards as far as soil amendments in the shade tree ordinance.
Great. The other question I had is a few paragraphs down for that in G on curbs. And by my reading of this, I'm not certain that this would allow for curb cuts in order for stormwater to flow off of a street and into a vegetated swale or rain garden or some other green infrastructure-type installation along a street. And I know that sometimes curb rules stand in the way, you know, require variances or whatever.
No, in this case, what this is saying is you have to put curbs in. But if there's a case where you have to have a curb cut to allow water to get into a rain garden, that would be allowable. It wouldn't be a variance.
It wouldn't. Okay, great. That's all. Thanks.
Okay, if there aren't any other comments, let's see. Section 163 was just updated, dealing with all track improvements. Section 10B-203C, we're going to need to refer to your additional sheets. We added some language regarding porous pavement, and that's in Item C, page 71. But before I get to 71, does anybody have anything before? That's a big jump. Okay, page 71, if we can jump to that. I should also, as you're flipping through, you'll see Pages 70, 71 have some new standards dealing with parking pavement standards, parking aisle widths, and general design standards, which were reviewed by ZAR. And they're in there, because we never had those types of standards and we felt we should. Okay, so that brings us up to 10B-203C, page 71, and you'll see the new language in red that we're suggesting be added regarding porous pavement and some construction details. And if there are questions, Jack will jump in and explain it.
What's a choker course?
It's a course, what happens is the underlying stone is larger stone, clean stone. So they put a choker course between that and the actual pavement. It serves as a leveling course, and just so the, it's better for the machines to, when they're putting down the pavement, rolling over it as opposed to rolling over clean stone. But really, it's used as a leveling course.
An exemption, oh, thank you, that's what it was. An exemption in the E2, in the borough zone, and you'll see in my draft here on page 73, we were just calling it an E2B, so that it's clear, it's just in the borough. But the policy decision for the board to think about, and if you want to, to recommend to council, would simply be, this is used in the E2 zone, which covers some of Westminster, some of the seminary, and some of the university. And basically, what it said is, if new buildings were set back more than 150 feet from the street, they were exempt from site plan. It's a provision that's been in for a while, predates, it's been in there probably at least 30 years or more. But staff identified it as a policy, because it's not in the township, it is in the borough. We believe council will have to make a decision, and when ZAR discussed it, they weren't ready to make a recommendation, I guess is fair to say. And I wanted to bring it up to you to have a discussion and give a little direction as to what you want to do. I have a feeling there's some in the audience that may also want to comment on this.
Just possible.
Lee, just go back over that a minute. This would extend this for the first time to the educational zones in the township, is that right?
Well, that's not what we were recommending, and that's why I put it as E2B. If you want to continue, you could recommend that. If you want to continue what was the practice in the borough, we would probably need to also rename the E2 zone that's in the former borough. I think for simplicity, we could do an E2B. And then it would only apply to the former borough E2 zone. If you wanted to extend it to the E2, then we don't need to do the E2B. Our approach in harmonizing the ordinance was, as much as possible, to keep things the way they were. We've gone through, we added some things where we thought we were missing pieces. When we get into some of the stormwater stuff, where the town and the borough differed, we took the more restrictive. And there weren't a whole lot of instances like that. This is one of the biggest differences, I think. And that's why we flagged it, flagged it at ZAR, and we're flagging it again for you to at least consider. You know, you don't have to make a recommendation. When this goes to council, it'll be one of the things I will flag for them as a policy, because I'm hoping to do a similar walkthrough as we're doing tonight with them, and just flag things that were major changes, or that staff identified anyhow as a major change.
Jerry?
Lee, just one question, that's something I had not noted before. Do we really want to exempt minor site plans from all the provisions in the site plan article? Because I don't think it's a matter of practice we do that.
I don't know where you're.
I'm at 206A. I'm sorry, minor subdivisions.
Yeah, you can't require a site plan for a minor subdivision.
No, no, I meant, oh, okay, I see. It's still subject to all the subdivision provisions, but not, okay, sorry.
So I guess, in regard to this E2B zone, I have some reservations about continuing to exempt these projects. It just seems to me that even if a site is more than 150 feet from a public street, that it can still have impacts on the town, traffic impacts, environmental impacts. I mean, I don't know whether, for instance, the stadium would have fallen into this zone, the football stadium, but clearly, there are, you know, there are things that the community probably want to be able to review and weigh in on, even for things that are internal to the campus. And even if we decided to continue this, you know, 150 feet seems small when we have a noticing requirement of 200 feet radius for neighboring properties that are affected by any other application in town. I don't know why we would have the exemption for sites that are 150 feet away from public property.
You know, my question about this is that, in my recollections from SCRAV, is that it worked all right for the university, but it was very chancy with Westminster and the seminary. These are smaller campuses, and there's a need to use more space there. So I just, I asked Lee about this before, and now that we're getting changes on both campuses, it's a good time to think about it again. Anybody else? You can't hear me? All right. I just said that this, the E2 zone is Westminster and the seminary and the university. And the university has a fair amount of space, but both the. Yeah, okay. Well, I can't hear them, so maybe we're even. No, the thing is that both Westminster and the seminary are about to make changes to their campus plans and so on, and we need to think seriously about how they will be affected by this, whether they can use this, whether we need to go back and review what's been done with this, so.
Anybody else? Julie?
I agree with David that it's leaving us open to possible difficulties. I think the town has developed enough that even a site 150 feet from the street could impact other areas. So I feel uncomfortable recommending that it stay in.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I just want to add that, I agree with David also. I'm just wondering, you kind of, I'm not sure if you exactly touched on it, but I'm trying to figure out what was the reasoning that the exemption was made to begin with.
Well, it, I was trying to think when it was made, because I remember when the E zones came in in the 60s and so on, but this was after that. It eliminated a lot of review that was, had to be done for university buildings and so on. We really went through all kinds of hoops every time the university did something, and a lot of it really didn't impact the town, or at least that was the feeling. Now, the campus is much denser and so on. I'm not so sure we'd feel that way again, but this is a question that all of us need to think about it, that, you know, this really, in some ways, was to limit the amount of extra housing and so on, but it extended over into other kinds of construction as well, and parking lots and so on. So is that right, Lee?
I think so. The provision has only been used a few times. The largest one where it was used was probably when the university built Whitman College, but the portion of Whitman College in the township required the site plan, so the board reviewed it anyhow, and you had to review the whole thing. The university may be able to shed more light. I just know that it's been used in the past infrequently, and it was, you know. I think the review time as well, and if you look at some of the standards that are in the E2 zone, there weren't a whole lot that you were reviewing it against anyhow.
Just kind of drawing back to that old maximum about if we forget about history, you know, we may have not, don't remember, like, what, doomed to repeat it, because it may solve certain problems that if we change this, as much as I agree with David and with Julie chimed in on, my fear is that if we remove it, like, what did we fix back then that we just don't remember anymore that we're going to bring back by removing it?
Well, one of the things that used to be, and I remember that, for instance, when Fine Hall and the physics complex were built, they were shifted so that they were over in the township, so it would be all one review process, so you didn't have one part in the E zone and another part not. But now, that's, things are different. And I'd be curious to know what the university thinks about this, or Westminster or the seminary for that matter. Mr. Goldman?
Yeah, if I may, thank you for the opportunity. Rich Goldman, Drinker Biddle and Wreath for the university. I think a lot of the comments were sort of on point. When this was originally adopted, I think it was recognized as sort of the core campus area, lots of buildings, it's mostly developed, but also lots of activities. They're older, many of the buildings are historic. There's always things going on to make it work for the school. And I think until this happened, having to review every single application, every single improvement, was burdensome for both sides. And so I think this ordinance provision came into effect. Now, primarily, I think but for Whitman College, the only one, that was the only one we could come up with also, where it was an actual building. Typically, remember, your ordinance requires a site plan for almost any improvement that you build outside, whether it's a transformer, you know, a shed, a bump out on a new awning over an entryway. And so there's so much of that that goes on, on campus, out of view of, you know, the community, that I think everyone felt this would be a good idea, and it has worked very well. I don't think anybody driving through a campus goes, "Oh, my God, I can't believe we didn't have site plan over this, and look what they built." I mean, you know, they're very responsible about it. So one of the thoughts we had, because we understand the concern that you have as well, obviously, you would not want to see us build a, you know, massive new building in the heart of the campus that generated lots of traffic and had other impacts that you felt you should review. And one of the things I might consider, or recommend that you consider, is maybe instead of eliminating this entirely, maybe you tweak it to a situation where for minor improvements, for additions, for, you know, things that might otherwise be considered, minor site plans, not habitable spaces, equipment, you know, embellishments, I might say, that those might continue to be exempt and take that burden of review off and the time it takes and the money. And maybe if there are significant buildings to be built, that those would go before the board for site plan review. I think that might be a nice compromise that would work for both sides. I don't think I'm trying to say, you know, this is good for us, it's not good for. I think it would be good for both sides, and I don't think it would present any risk at all of, you know, some untoward situation developing on the campus.
If I could, what's coming down, I'm sorry I didn't bring the zoning map. I have a small version, which hopefully will make it down. It shows you where the E2 zone is, and as Rich said, it's the heart of, the older heart of the university campus. Similarly, for Westminster, it's the heart of that. And for the seminary, again, it's the middle. And you'll see, we have an E1 zone, which is usually where it abuts the community more directly, that also forms as a buffer. So as the map makes its way down, and I'm sorry I didn't think to bring the color map to show you, you can see sort of where it is. The smaller applications, we do process as a waiver anyhow, as exempt from site plan. So if they put an awning up, that doesn't, you've never seen a university application for an awning. That's how we use the exception to site plan standards for things that are that small. But it's been rarely used, you know. I understand the cost that's associated with an application, and that's not an insignificant sum. And so there are some reasons, I think, to continue it. There are probably some equally valid reasons to not. But as the map makes its way down, at least you can see where it is.
If it would be helpful, we did a small drawing that actually shows the 150-foot line. So it shows you the E2 zone on the campus, and then we've designated the area that's within the 150 foot. So you actually will see the 150 foot, and I can pass that around.
Yes, go ahead.
You know, looking out.
You know, looking out over the next 20 years or so, which is what we're doing with some of these, it seems to me that the planning board needs to accept some oversight over planning that's going to be much denser than we have envisioned today. And I guess my sense is that having, that having some say in the large constructions, new buildings, new, new structures on the various campuses, is something that we ought to be involved with. I agree with Mr. Goldman. I think that it's a waste of time to bring every minor thing in here. But I don't think we can anticipate now, a university has a master plan, or, sorry, a campus plan, that we can pretty well project, that's going to create some buildings. I don't know that they would be, I haven't, I mean, I don't know what their position is at the moment, but it seems to me we might want to keep some purview, some part of that in our purview, in the board's purview over the next 20 years or so. Because I think what happens over those two decades is going to be probably all that can ever happen. I mean, things will be going up, but things can't get too much denser down in both, in this area. And we don't know what's going to be happening at Westminster, or the seminary for that matter. So I would think we would, the board should keep some level of oversight on large constructions, however that's worked.
I actually have a question for Jerry, which is, I think what Lee was suggesting was to create this new E2B zone, which would only apply to the university and would not apply to Westminster or the seminary. And I'm wondering whether that, there could, is that not the case?
We'd have to do more than that. My suggestion was you would just create a new E2B so that it would apply to the seminary and Westminster.
All of them.
If you wanted to just apply to the university, I, yes, we could do that, but we'd have to rename the other zones then as well. It's-
You couldn't leave them as E2?
We can work out. We're looking for guidance from you as to what you want. If you wanted to just say, maybe it makes sense for the university because it's a much larger campus than it is. As you can see from the map, we can craft something that would have it just apply to the university and their E2 zone. We just then need to rename or do something a little bit differently. I think with the remaining E2, they have to become something different. And then, yeah, it's a little bit more complicated, but we can try to figure something out.
I guess I just, to finish the question I was going to ask, since I misunderstood the intention, was, you know, could we be challenged, you know, by the seminary Westminster as being somehow discriminatory towards them if we did not include them in this new zone?
I mean, obviously, they could always challenge us, but I think one could make a good distinction between the university and the seminary in Westminster, the distinction that people have been making. And I think they would have a very hard row to hoe to prevail in any litigation.
So maybe that's the best way to go, is to, you know, have it be exclusive to the university, this exemption. I mean, I don't know how other people feel, but.
If I may, one technique I've seen is you, in addition to that exemption requiring 150 feet, you could require that the applicant have a certain minimum number of acres in the campus. And so if you tailored that properly-
I think if the consensus of the board is that you want us to come up with some language that would continue this for the university, we can do that. Again, same as with the electronic submissions. We'll have it for the council meeting. You'll get a second swipe at it when we come back, after it's introduced. Staff is just looking for direction as to, do you want it in? Do you want to modify it? Do you want it out? So if you tell us, you know, allow it for the university, again, Jerry and I, and we can meet with Rich Goldman, come up with language that accomplishes that. I don't think it's difficult to do, it's just we got to think it through. I wouldn't try to do it tonight, but I think within the next week or two, before it goes to council, we can have that done. And then again, we would point it out to the council that that's what we did, and they would be able to comment on whether or not they agree or disagree with what you're recommending.
And may I add, during this project, that maybe staff would also like to basically differentiate between those items which are, we consider minor, that would be part of the exemption, and what the criteria would be for items that are not so minor that we want to come before the-
I agree, as Mr. Goldman suggested. Yeah, as Mr. Goldman suggested.
Right, right, that's what suggested, yeah. Basically enumerate what those actual items are.
I agree with that.
Could we touch bases with the seminary and Westminster before this goes to the council?
Sure. We'll let them know it's being considered. And at this point, it sounds like we have a consensus that staff will work on some language to continue the exemption for the university. We'll let both the seminary and Westminster know when it will be scheduled in front of council, so they will also have the opportunity to say me too and counsel.
But that would only be a partial exemption, if I'm understanding what the board members are saying, that major projects within the 150 feet would come before the board. Is that-
Was it major projects? I thought you were exempting everything within.
What Dwayne said was, he wanted a threshold size of a project, whether it's 10,000 square feet, so that you couldn't build a huge building, and they're exempt if it had an impact. So.
Right. That's what I understood.
I just made the 10,000.
Right. Maybe a little small, maybe five thousand.
I didn't hear the minor projects.
Sounds big. Okay, we're great on that.
We'll keep going.
Can we move along?
Couple of minor changes again at 10B 2071, and we'll come back to some others, but at, in 10B 230, the checklists were updated for site plans, just as they were for subdivisions. We moved design standards at 10B 226.1 for the MRR, which is the former hospital site, just to keep those alive. If there's ever any redevelopment, they would come into play. And if there aren't any questions, I'd like to briefly jump to page 116, unless you have something before then.
Sorry, I didn't hear you. What page?
Page 116 and 117. It's tree replacement schedule, that's new. That's to be in compliance with the recently passed ordinance by council and shade tree on tree replacement. So I just wanted to point that out. I don't know if there's much of a policy, the policy decision, I think, was made when council passed the ordinance for shade tree, but I wanted to point out that that is new in the ordinance, and we're just following that. Sorry, did I miss something? Okay. If there's nothing else, just briefly to bounce to 10B 240.1. We relocated the stream buffer ordinance. It was in an earlier section, which staff couldn't figure out why. The standards all stay the same, but we moved it to the floodway section. It just seemed to make more sense to have something like a stream buffer in that area.
133?
136, I think. It said 240.1, right, Lee?
That's-
136.
133 to 120.
Here's something else.
They moved the stream corridor ordinance.
Are you still on page 133, Lee?
Are we okay? 133.
This is the same also.
This is mine.
Okay. I was jumping to, I'm sorry.
Different board members have different pagination. That's what's confusion up here.
Pagination, section 10B-240.1. Mine, it's page 133. It's the waterway stream corridor buffer. It was pointed out, we're going to delete the first part of that section, which is really a preamble and isn't regulatory. And we did that. I think there should be on one of the handout, or we just noted that that's what we were going to do. And then you'll see on page 134, the regulations continue as they had, it's just we relocated them. All the definitional portions were moved to the definition section. Next, on page 136, preservation plans. We deleted in its entirety. That was relocated when we redid the historic ordinance, and it still showed us up here, so we're just correcting that. And then just minor edits on Article XB, which are general development permits. And that brings us through everything but zoning. The municipality will still have to work through affordable housing. That's not part of this either. The Affordable Housing Board is working on something on that. That's a summary of the changes. What we'd like to do is we'll make, I have a shout to amay the edits that are in red in the handout we will make. We will add language regarding electronic submissions, and then come up with some language regarding the university in terms of minor applications being exempted. The game plan is to slightly change the format. I got to talk to the clerk as to, I found italics or underline and strike through is easier to read. I don't know if we have to go to the little brackets, but we'll reformat it. We'll put it in ordinance form with hopefully an early April meeting date at council. That gives the time to come back to the planning board's second meeting in April, and then council would adopt hopefully at the end of April. But that's the current timeline. If you see any other little typos that we've missed, just send me an email. I'm sure there are a few. But thank you very much for your input.
Let me just ask, there are a number of people sitting out here, whether any, you had comments that you wanted to read into the record while we're working on this? Anybody?
When we set our little piece, just to compliment the staff and everybody, it's a, what a task to do this, right? It's really impressive.
And it's been a long time coming, too. All right. I guess staff has its work cut out, and if you have second thoughts on any of these things, please email the office and let us know. Anybody? No?
Since Mildred's not here, can I move to, can I move to adjourn?
What a good thought. Is there a second for that?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor?
Hi.
Post?
She is, she's pretty good.
All right.
Good night.